Good afternoon. I'd like to call the August 2, 2016 City Council meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dominguez, Hart, Hodgkiss, Mario, Rouse, White, Mayor Schneider.
Here. Item one.
Employee Recognition Service Award Pins.
Thank you, Mr. Casey.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Each month, we like to recognize employees for achieving certain milestones for working with the city, and so I have a number of names I'd like to read into the record, and two of them are here in person to receive their pins. With five years of service, Derek Bailey, Supervising Transportation Engineer, Public Works Department, and Brad Rarer, Project Engineer II with the Public Works Department. With ten years of service, Yoli McGlinchey, Emergency Services Manager, Fire Department, and Julie Thomas, Recreation Coordinator, Parks and Recreation Department. With fifteen years of service, Rick Hubbard, Harbor Patrol Officer, Waterfront Department, George Johnson, Creek Supervisor, Parks and Recreation Department, and Chris Short, Senior Plan Check Engineer, Community Development Department. With twenty years of service, Margaret DuVille, Network Applications Analyst, Admin Services Department, Andy Hill, Police Officer with the Police Department, and David Shoemaker, Senior Engineering Technician, Public Works Department. With twenty-five years of service, she will be here to receive her pin, Marie Cruzenberry, Library Assistant One, Library Department. And with thirty years of service, and he's here to receive his pin in person, is Mike McGrew, Police Sergeant, Police Department.
Okay, why don't we start with Ms. Cruzenberry? Come on up. Marie Cruzenberry began her career with the Santa Barbara Public Library System on August 26, 1991, as a Library Assistant One. She served the community in this position for twenty-five years, helping countless citizens. She began her career at the Santa Barbara Central Branch, moving to the Galita Library, where she's been a highly valued employee and inspiration to her coworkers for nine extremely productive years. Marie's work has been greatly appreciated by her supervisors, coworkers, and the public. She's extremely knowledgeable about all aspects of the Santa Barbara Public Library System. She's performed reliably throughout the years, giving superb customer service to the people served by the library system. Marie resides in Galita with her husband Steve and daughter Emma. They have one cat and one dog, and when not fostering cats and their many kittens, she traces her genealogy and enjoys traveling. Marie, it's my pleasure to honor you today for your twenty-five years of service to the City of Santa Barbara. On behalf of the City Council, we congratulate you on this admirable achievement. Thank you so much. Thank you. Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers, and Mr. Casey, I really do enjoy the work we do at the library. It's very gratifying, and I just want to thank you for this recognition of my service, and thank you to my coworkers and my family for their support. Mr. McGrew, come on up. There you go. Sergeant Mike McGrew began his career with the City of Santa Barbara Police Department in August 1986 as a police academy recruit. Upon graduation from the academy, he became a sworn police officer, working patrol. During his tenure, Mike has held positions of Patrol and Field Training Officer, Burglary and Major Crimes Detective, Patrol Sergeant, Major Crime Sergeant, Hostage Negotiator, and Team Sergeant, Patrol Motor Traffic and K-9 Sergeant, and he's currently assigned in the patrol as a Sergeant and Field Supervisor. Mike has served for over twenty-eight years on the Board of the Santa Barbara Police Officers Association, including many years as the POA President. He's received numerous commendations for his leadership, investigative skills, courage, character, tenacity, work ethic, and valor. His commendations were bestowed by chiefs, mayors, the District Attorney's Office, state and federal law enforcement agencies, naval commanders, business owners, community organizations, victims of crimes, and his peers. Three times, Mike received the H. Thomas Geary Award, in 1987, for valor for disarming and arresting a violent subject who attacked citizens and officers on State Street with a samurai sword; in 1992, for outstanding performance after solving a string of commercial burglaries, resulting in arrest and recovery of $1 million worth of stolen property; and in 2016, for valor for apprehending and arresting a violent mentally ill subject who endangered many lives while erratically driving a large RV in the city. Mike received the Santa Barbara County Life Saving Award after providing CPR to rescue a citizen who stopped breathing during a massive heart attack. Twice, he was named Officer of the Month, and twice, he received the coveted Optimist Award for Outstanding Law Enforcement Service. Mike frequently donates his time to charities. He's currently involved at the Teddy Bear Cancer Foundation, the Santa Barbara Police Foundation, and the At Ease Program for Guidance and Support of his fellow law enforcement family members. Mike loves his church and the outdoors. He enjoys hunting, fishing, camping, and motorcycle riding. He's happily married to his wife Nicole. He's the proud grandfather of Kenley and Nathaniel, and father of Taran, Matthew, and Michael TT, who passed away after a lengthy battle with bone cancer. Mike credits his faith in God and the support of the people around him for his successes and for overcoming tremendous personal and professional challenges. So Sergeant Mike McGrew, on behalf of the City Council, is my pleasure and honor to today to honor your thirty years of service with the City of Santa Barbara. Thank you so much for your service.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, I've been blessed to have been able to serve this community for the past thirty years. It's a very special community that has given to me more than I could give to it, and this community's been here for some pretty tough times, and they've helped me get through it, and I just can't thank them enough. So it's been my honor to serve with the men and women of the Police Department, who are just filled with courage and character, and just the most wonderful people to work with. The support of this community, the department, and my family who's here today, it's just been wonderful, and I want to thank you for this proclamation. I want to thank you each for your leadership to this city and for your service to this city, so thank you very much.
Are there any changes to the agenda? No? Okay. Public comment. We have a number of speakers. I'm going to start. Actually, we have some visitors from our oldest sister city of Toba, Japan. We are celebrating our 50th anniversary with the sister city, and every year, we have the exchange students come in and they're hosts. So Ms. Matthews, if you'd like to introduce them, please do.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. We have the real wonderful pleasure today of introducing to you our 23rd batch of exchange students. We have four from Santa Barbara and four visiting at the moment from Toba. They'll introduce themselves. They're really very cute. We're going to see them today in their summer yucatas, because it's that time of year, and after they finish celebrating Fiesta here with us, they're going to take their Santa Barbara counterparts to Toba and celebrate the Obon Festival, and we'll see them all wearing yucca over there. While they're here, they're going to be camping at Lake Kachuma, and we expect them to have a grand old time. There'll be another group of Toba people coming in October for our 50th anniversary celebration, to which we invite all of you up here, and especially Madam Mayor. Stay tuned for the activities and ceremonies that will be associated with that. And now, I'd like to introduce our group for this year. Would you all stand and turn around? Turn around. And our chaperones, stand and turn around. And each of them will step to the mic to introduce themselves.
They can turn around again, you know. Hello. Come on. Beautiful.
So give your name, and then bring your partner up.
Hi, I'm Isabel Vasquez. I'm 15 years old, and I go to Santa Barbara High School. This is Yuka.
My name is Yuko Tujihana. I am 14 years old. I enjoy swimming in Santa Barbara.
And Sidney? Go ahead. And bring your partner with you.
My name is Sidney. I am 14 years old, and I go to San Marcos High School. This is Takara.
My name is Takara Karamura. I am 14 years old. I enjoyed Land Shark in Santa Barbara.
In case you didn't catch that, she enjoyed the land shark.
Hello, I am William Taylor. I am 13 years old, and I go to Lachaina Junior High School in Santa Barbara.
And your partner? Isa?
And this is Isa.
Hi, my name is Isa Miyahama. I am 14 years old. I like saw people in Santa Barbara, because many people is very kind. Thank you.
And also, Isa gave a wonderful demonstration of martial arts at our welcome pool party he's supposed to be reckoned with.
Hello, my name is Jackson Olbrich. I'm 14 years old, and I go to Santa Barbara High School. And this is you.
Hello, my name is Yu Maeda. I am 14 years old. I enjoy searching in Santa Barbara.
Hi, my name is Lisa Ishikawa, and I am from Santa Barbara here, and I get to accompany these lovely students to Toba in about ten days, and my son was able to participate last year, so it's just an honor to be part of this group again. And this is Akiko.
Hello, my name is Akiko Mura. I'm a chaperone from Toba, so I really appreciate you to give us the wonderful occasion to visit here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're delighted to have them, and the last thing I just want to say is, viva la fiesta!
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. We also, as you can tell, we don't always wear flowers in our hair, but I do know that, especially the guys, right? You have the hats on, that's fantastic. But we do have El Presidente up here, and if you wanted to come up at this point, welcome. Viva la fiesta! And with a whole contingent of flower girls and...
Just another day in Santa Barbara.
Right, just another day in Santa Barbara, right.
Just another day.
You can put the mic up if you want there, Daisy.
Well, they're coming up. I'll go ahead and address Madam Mayor and Council, Mr. Casey as well. Once again, we're here before you as we're quickly approaching our 92nd Fiesta, and once again, we cannot understate the amount of support that we receive from the city. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I do have some of our flower girls and las señoritas, and once allowed, they'll be able to present a couple little goodies, and maybe while they're...
The one time a year, I let people come through the bar.
It's the only time.
It's the only time a year, but yes, come on through and welcome.
And I'll just go ahead and keep on speaking for a moment.
Go ahead.
So every year, we present, of course, the annual poster, which will be the same this year. I'm constantly reminded, my daughter was just dancing across the street at Paseo Nuevo, and it's been great having so many people come up and recognize the theme in the poster, and it just dawned on me as I'm sitting here, I'm almost looking at our poster on the wall over here, so it's really clear that, you know, the sea has played such an influence in Santa Barbara, and we're looking forward to a great Fiesta. And this is the poster for those who have not seen it yet. So I'll go ahead and I'll just leave it right here. Thank you once again, viva la fiesta! Hope to see everybody out and about.
Great. We'll see a lot of you in the next few days. Okay, on to other public comments. We have Richard, is it Manthe, and then Phil Parsons. You have two minutes here at the podium. Go right ahead.
It's just pretty simple, to check on the downtown drinking fountains on State Street, make sure they drain properly and things, so they're not a health concern.
Okay. Well, thank you for letting us know. We'll look into that. Phil Parsons will be followed by Phil Walker, and then, I don't have a name, I just have something about myself and noise, so whoever that is, you can come up afterwards. Mr. Parsons.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Phil Parsons. I'm 73 years old. I'm here to support Wheels Liaison and request that the council work with them to find fair and equitable alternatives to the proposed anti-RV parking ordinance, an ordinance that would be an eviction notice to those of us with no viable housing alternative. I live in a motor home. I went to City College in the '60s. I got a BA from San Francisco State, did a year of law school at the University of San Francisco, for whatever that's worth to anybody. I've lived here for the past eighteen years. My son and brother live here. I volunteer my time at two well-known venues, which I won't name, but you may guess what they are, for an average minimum of forty hours a month. I have been a homeowner in my past and business owner for twenty years. For the past three years, as a result of a foreclosure of my previous rental apartment, my home has been on four wheels. My only income is social security. I can afford to rent here, but have roots here and love this city, and some of the things we've seen earlier in this meeting are part of the reason why I love Santa Barbara so much. Because of my limited income and because public housing assistance is virtually nonexistent, I don't know where I would or could go if I were to lose my home, my motor home. In closing, I suggest that the measure of a society is its sense of compassion and how it treats its most vulnerable and weakest citizens, and that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me and viva la fiesta.
Thank you very much. Mr. Walker?
Hard to accept that title in introduction. My dad was an officer of fire in World War II in the Pacific, and he was also always Mr. Walker, and I called him sir. I was enlisted to Drill Sergeants, Fort Lewis, Washington, in November 7/66. You did not call a drill sergeant sir. Okay, it was a pleasure to see Sergeant Mike McGrew here today. I remember him. I was a young man once too, and this is probably between 25 and 30 years ago. He was a canine handler that used to bring the police canines into El Estero, and they worked the galleries, because it was an ideal site. But at that time, El Estero, essentially, I called it the Badlands. Front gate, they had the Bravados Motorcycle Club that used me for target practice one night. Anything went, you had to run a gauntlet getting in the front gate, especially Saturday morning early. The homeless jungle was on the backside, so things have gotten better. And essentially, it was a blessing to see Sergeant McGrew, and with the Rescue Mission on one side, Calvary Chapel on the other. I call it Graceland now, because I've been through some of my knocks, too, and I've had some life-threatening events. Also, we had a, he came from City Parks, a tree trimmer, Dave Elliott, was pulled out to help a friend in the Sobranes Fire Burn Area, and it's timed, you know, it was called, I call it instantaneous fire-scaping. He got on it, he has all the skill sets, and, you know, they essentially saved the structure. But talking to my neighbor, David Kruger, he says, and I see it too, there are so many dead trees and overhanging growth, especially Mission Canyon around the museum there, it's scary, and people need to get on their fire-scaping. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I think, sorry, did you have a public comment? I didn't get your name on here. Was this yours?
Yeah.
Why don't you come on up?
All right.
If you could state your name for the record, that would be helpful.
Okay.
And you have two minutes there at the podium.
Yes, a little too long. My name is Richard. Is that enough?
Yep, that's fine.
What seems to trouble a lot of us, and myself also, living here in Santa Barbara, is a level of noise which seems to emanate from a few motorcycles, cars, and trucks. The levels of these noises horrendous. Why can't it be stopped? The Police Department has motorcycles, and yet there's no noise emanating from them. Are there ordinances against this? There are skateboards also. They make noise, but they also are endangering people who are pedestrians. And yet, the police can't seem to pull them over and get them under control. Why is that? Not enough money? Not enough personnel? Are they understaffed? Or is it a violation of skateboarding rights? Is that the right to endanger others? The right to damage others' ears, brains? So I leave it to you and to the good people behind me. And I say thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, before we finish public comment, I have one other item I'd like to share, and that is a word of thanks to our Assistant Deputy Diddy Clerk, Susan, who, this is your last meeting here before retirement or whatever it is, that next adventure that you're going to take, and I just personally want to thank you for your service and for keeping us honest and accurate and going through many roll calls that some have been easy and some not so much. We've had a number of motions made up here that, you know, needed to be done exactly right, and we really, really, very much appreciate your service, and you can see a lot of your colleagues are here today. So actually, on behalf of everyone, this is for you. And I'll say, one time she has made me nervous was when she was counting signatures on making sure I was qualified, you know, to do things on ballots and vote and do, you know, make sure, then 200 words in my statement, and, but it's the attention to detail that's so consistent and important that makes the city run so well. So congratulations and thank you so much. Okay. All right, and with the, yay, Susan! Yay, Susan. And with that, now we're going to make her read some items on the consent calendar.
Item three, Introduction of Ordinance for Encroachment Permits for Victoria Hall Theater Facilities at 33 West Victoria Street and Parking Lot Number Five. Recommending that council introduce and subsequently adopt, by reading up title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving an encroachment permit agreement with Child Abuse Listening Mediation Incorporated, a California nonprofit public benefit corporation, Ensemble Theater Company Incorporated, a California nonprofit corporation, and Luria New Vic LLC, a California limited liability company affecting the properties known as 1236 Chapala Street and 33 West Victoria Street, and approving an encroachment permit agreement with Ensemble Theater Company Incorporated, a California nonprofit corporation, affecting the property known as 33 West Victoria Street. Each agreement intending to terminate and supersede encroachment permit agreement 24521, approved by ordinance 5621, and adopted by council on June 4, 2013, for portions of site improvements that were authorized to encroach along and into the frontage of Victoria Street, and a portion of City Parking Lot Number Five, and authorizing the Public Works Director to execute both encroachment permit agreements. And item four, Adoption of Ordinance Granting and Easement on City Property at 125 State Street to Southern California Edison. Recommending that council adopt, by reading up title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara granting an easement to Southern California Edison for public utilities in and under the city-owned property at 125 State Street, and the execution and recording of said easement deed for this property.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. There's, public comment slips for items three and seven. Anyone else need to pull anything? Okay, so item three was already read. It's the encroachment permits for Victoria Hall Theater and the New Vic, and so, Mr. Weston, if you'd like to come on up.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So the item itself, I think, is non-controversial. That really is not why I came. We have an existing encroachment agreement that is being divided into two separate encroachment agreements with no substantive changes to the agreements themselves. So I'm here on behalf of Ensemble Theater. I did not want this occasion to pass without noting what we consider to be the mother of all milestones. This really represents an extremely important occasion in the life of Ensemble Theater, and we think in the city's efforts to have a vibrant performing arts district downtown. Two weeks ago, about two weeks ago, Ensemble completed subdivision of the property, separating the comp property from the New Vic side, and completed purchase of the theater. So Ensemble Theater Company now owns the New Vic outright. There's every reason to believe that we will be able to use that facility, and that facility will help Santa Barbara for the indefinite future. When we began our renovation, well, actually, when the city began its effort to have a downtown performing arts district, that was some thirty years ago, and this is really the culmination, an intimate theater downtown, we began our efforts to remodel the New Vic, excuse me, with a thirty-year lease only. And it was the, not just the generosity, but the vision of Lee Luria and Candy Luria Budgar that made it possible for us to acquire the property. And it also is thanks to you. Ellie Langer and I came before you fourteen years ago, when we first proposed Redevelopment Agency provide some support to Ensemble Theater, and you have hung in there this entire time, and we deeply appreciate it. Originally, we had hoped to build a facility in a different location, then when that proved infeasible, we planned to stay at the Alacama. When that proved infeasible, we undertook taking over the New Vic, and this is the crowning achievement from our perspective. We've completed three full seasons, we think very successful, and now own the facility. So on behalf of our entire board, on behalf of hundreds of volunteers who have worked tirelessly for Ensemble Theater, on behalf of Jonathan Fox, our Executive Artistic Director, we want to thank you, who really have hung in there and showed vision and made this day possible. And my own view is that this is a terrific example of a public-private venture. We couldn't have done it without you, and this was not something the city alone could have done. So I especially want to thank Brian Bossi, who has had the Redevelopment Agency when we began, Sarah Connect, who was just terrific in the City Attorney's Office for helping with logistics, and of course, Paul Casey, and the many members of city staff planning public works who helped us overcome one obstacle after another. So we do think that Ensemble and the New Vic will provide a lasting contribution to the performing arts, and we thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you for your persistence.
I have a comment.
Mr. Dominguez has a comment for you.
So I wasn't on the council during all this work, so I can't take any of the credit, but I did happen to meet Paula Bruce last night, who's on the Board of Directors.
Our president.
The president of the Board of Directors. So based on her entreaties, my wife and I are buying a subscription, and I'd encourage everyone to buy a subscription to the theater. It's a one-of-a-kind thing here in Santa Barbara, so thank you.
I appreciate you saying that, Council Dominguez. I restrained myself, but you can buy season tickets, and it is so inexpensive, and then you go, and if for some reason you can't attend on your night, we switch it for free for you, and if you can't go at all, you can give it to a friend, so it's a great thing to do for Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Great. Great, thank you very much. Okay, and then item seven, we have, Mr. Walker, you had come on up, and this is regarding the grantary report regarding Lake Kachuma. Go ahead, Mr. Walker.
Good afternoon, once again, Mayor Schneider, members of the city council, and even a lot of Fiesta, I'll put that in. You know, Das Williams asked me to come, start coming to the co-meetings in fall of 2007, post the Zaca fire, and I raised a lot of concerns about sedimentation, and it unfortunately is borne out with what happened at Gibraltar, and now there is an impact on Lake Kachuma as far as sedimentation. And, you know, I live in the hot zone of a lot of interaction, a lot of plumbers pull up for a quick stop there at Melpas Quinientos, and you've got Awan Auto across the street. And Mr. Delgado, who owns Delgados Plumbing, a very well-versed man with water, and he says it's really, really time to start looking somehow to dredge. I fully understand with Gibraltar, they had an Italian pneumatic dredge in there, and once they filled up the side canyon, that was it. You know, there was no more convenient place to put the sand, but somehow to push it, you can pump it, the pumps today, you know, push it out to the ocean and surf. But Kachuma, you're going to find, I walked it at the low point in September 1990, it was down 90 feet. Now it's down 95, pushing to 100, and it's a big, big concern. And remember, it's much more difficult to digest sand than paper. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion for the consent calendar?
Second.
Moved by White, second by Hotchkiss. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Hart.
Yes, the Finance Committee met today and unanimously recommended the transfer of 518 East Cannon Perdido, the Eleanor Apartments, to the Housing Authority of the City of Santa Barbara, and that's an item that will be coming back to the council at a future date.
Great, thank you. Item number 12.
Capital Improvement Program Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2016.
Great, Mr. Demore, whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Brian Demore, City Engineer for the City of Santa Barbara. I look at council and I think I blew it on the costume.
You're not the only one. I've been teasing Mr. Casey and Mr. Cologne, but next year, next year.
And Paul, actually, Mr. Casey did tell me that I should be prepared to dress for the occasion, so I knew better. Next year, you got it. So, yeah, this afternoon I will be presenting capital project highlights with a particular focus on accomplishments in the last two quarters in the recently completed fiscal year. The last time I presented, there were a couple of videos that we played, and I've been told that it won't be such a bad thing if we're out of here a little bit early, being Fiesta Week. So I hope to have some good videos on the next one that will come out probably early in 2017. But otherwise, this will just be a standard PowerPoint with project highlights. But speaking of Fiesta, I did want to highlight the fact that one of the things that we do in Public Works Engineering is to send out a notice, usually goes out in the middle of July regarding a construction moratorium during the Fiesta Week. So that affects construction within the public right-of-way for non-emergency-related work in the commercial areas. We also send out a notice to the outdoor dining establishments on State Street, just reminding them of the upcoming parade to get out so that people can enjoy the parade. And we do similar things like that throughout the year, depending on different events. We have the holiday moratorium, and there's other parades where we do similar noticing. And we've had very good compliance on both of those things, I would say. Getting into the project highlights, this slide is a snapshot from the website, the major projects map, and that was one of the videos that was shown how to navigate that when we met the last time. And just a reminder that that's there, that's available on our website. Really, the easiest way to find it, you can go to the city's main website, the main page, and just do a search of projects, and the first thing that comes up will take you right to here. And it contains project information. It's pretty basic information, but enough to give you a sense of the project, the scope, the cost, the schedule, and contact information if you're looking for more detailed information. So that includes a phone number and an email address. So as far as projects, in the last couple of quarters, 14 projects were completed, which means the notice of completion was filed to the county. We have 31 projects that are in construction and 37 projects in design. So I'll go through some highlights of projects within each of those categories. So here's a listing of the 14 completed capital improvement projects, a total value of over $9 million. And I'll pull a few of those out to highlight specifically. This first one here is the Low Impact Development Street Sidewalks and Alley's Phase One Project. It consisted of installing 23,000 square feet of permeable concrete pavers in the sidewalks around Alice Keck Park Memorial Gardens and the Parks and Rec Department's Service Road at Plaza Veracruz. The project was designed to capture and treat the volume of stormwater generated from a 1-inch 24-hour storm, and it's to be used as an example of a best management practice that meets the city's stormwater management program requirements. This project received 80% of its funding through a Prop 84 stormwater grant program, and the remainder was funded through Measure B, with a total project cost of about $1.8 Next up is Marina One, Phase Six. This project consisted of replacement of the docking system and its associated utilities for the H and I fingers. This is known as Phase Six in Marina One. Funding was provided by a low-interest loan from the Division of Boating and Waterways, and the total project cost was a little bit over $1.5 million. Another recently completed project is the Highway Safety Improvement Program Pedestrian Crosswalk Enhancements Project, which consisted of installing new rectangular rapid flashing beacons, streetlights, underground conduits, pedestrian access ramps, curb and gutter curb extensions, new poles, and decorative bases. This was completed at a few different locations. The photo that we're looking at here is on State and Cai Polo, Colorado. At this location, there was a new curb extension and a center median was installed, along with new pedestrian access ramps and new rectangular flashing beacons. So this will be a big improvement, we think, for this week ahead with Fiesta. A lot of people walk over from the San Roque neighborhood to get into Mackenzie Park. So this should be a great improvement for pedestrian safety in that area. Other locations under this project were on Carrillo Boulevard at Corona del Mar, where we installed new rectangular rapid flashing beacons, as well as on State Street at Islay and Pedregosa. Total project cost was over $700,000, with about $500,000 of that coming from a federal Moving on to construction projects in progress, as I mentioned, there's 31 projects in progress managed by Public Works Engineering, and the total value is nearly $100 million. I'll highlight several of those projects that are ongoing. This one here, I'm sure everybody is familiar with, the Highway Safety Improvement Program Traffic Signal Projects. This one's kind of all over downtown, and it's been there for most of the year, it seems. It's at 41 different intersections, includes larger and more visible traffic signals and new access ramps. The ramps are at eight different locations, eight of the 41. And the intersection upgrades, including the installation of countdown timers, will benefit pedestrians. Project is 90% grant-funded and has a total project cost of approximately $1.3 million. Thankfully, we are nearing the end of this one, and I do appreciate everyone's patience with this. I think we've learned a lot about trying to bite off 41 locations, not necessarily all at the same time, but all in one contract. It's been a big amount of work. It's going to be a great improvement, and fortunately, we won't have to do something on this scale for a while, regarding the traffic signals, anyway. Next project, another low-impact development project. This one is under construction on Quarantina Street, and it consists of the installation of permeable pavers on sidewalks and streets along the 700 and 800 blocks of Quarantina Street. As you can see from the photo, this is one of the locations in town where we have some of these great Italian stone pines that look incredible, provide a lot of shade, but unfortunately really are aggressive with their roots in terms of lifting sidewalks and damaging the roadway. So that was one of the reasons to move into the road with this strategy with, for an LID. We did it on sidewalks, and we're hoping that this will bring more water to the roots and that the trees will be a little bit less aggressive. So, yeah, Phase One, which consists of sidewalks along the west side of Quarantina Street, is complete. The remainder of the project will continue throughout the rest of this year as it moves up from, this is adjacent to the junior high athletic fields, and it'll move up to the 800 block of Quarantina Street. Total project cost is approximately $2 million, of which 80% of it came from a Prop 84 stormwater grant, and the remaining 20% from Measure B. This next project is the Secondary Process Improvements at the El Estero Wastewater Treatment Plant. This project is underway with mobilization and potholing complete. The project will address various longstanding issues and will result in a higher quality of treated effluent discharged into the Pacific Ocean. Project is funded through a low-interest state revolving fund loan, and it will be repaid from wastewater rate revenues. Total project cost is over $30 million, and it will be completed in 2018. The last project to highlight under construction, this is actually completed at this point, but is the Fire Department Training Props Installation Project, which consisted of installing two custom-built steel fire training structures on the existing fire training site. This construction required significant site prep, including grading and extensive stormwater management improvements prior to placing and securing the custom-built steel fire training structures. Work began in April 2014, it was substantially completed in November 2015. This project greatly improves the training capabilities of the Santa Barbara Fire Department. Funding for this project included city funds, fire training funds, and a significant donation from the Santa Barbara Fire Alliance. Total project cost was $375,000. Moving on to projects in design, there are 37 projects in progress in the design phase with a total value of approximately $77 million. And I'm going to go ahead and highlight a few of those projects, starting with Zone One pavement maintenance. So I believe I did highlight this one the last time, and unfortunately, we haven't made much progress on this because we've put it out to bid now two times, and both times we only received one bid, and each time that one bid was significantly higher than our engineer's estimate. So we're trying to sharpen our pencils and scratch our heads and figure out what's going on here, and I think it's a variety of factors. One is our location. It limits the pool of contractors who want to come up and do this type of work. This is, the scope of the work was grind and overlay, so taking off a couple inches of pavement, grinding that off, and repaving with a new surface. So there aren't a lot of local contractors available who can do this work, and then also the materials to do the work come from quite a ways away. So logistically, it's kind of a lot for them to coordinate, and this time of year, most contractors have their work planned for the rest of the year. So I think that the combination of the timing and our location, making it a bit challenging. So we'll be back to council later this month with a recommendation to reject the one bid that we did receive, and we plan to rebid that later in the year when we believe contractors will be looking and planning for their workload in early 2017. And we hope at that point, we can get a better bid price. The next project is the Las Placidas Road at Cliff Drive Roundabout. Right now, I would say better news to share on that one, it's out to bid. Bids are opening on August 18th, so a little over two weeks away. And if the bids come in at the engineer's estimate, we'll be just about where we need to fully fund the project. Looks like if there's any change order, we may have a little bit of a shortfall, but there's uncertainty in the bidding, so I don't want to say too much on where we're at on that. We'll find out on August 18th. But hopefully contractors are more interested in a stationary project, this project, as opposed to the pavement maintenance, which kind of moves all over town. So construction is being timed to follow construction of a new sewer force main in the area. If anybody's been through there, they've probably seen that there's some construction going on. So that was coordination between transportation and water resources to try to get some work done in advance of the bigger construction. Total project cost is $1.5 million, and about half of that is from state grant, and the remainder, local funds, including a general fund contribution. So construction would begin, I think we were looking at October, pending acceptable bids. The last project to highlight is the water main replacement, more of a program than a project, and this is something that's ramping back up. It had been kind of on hold for a bit, dealing with drought-related issues. I think we were continuing to invest in this program through funding, and now things are hitting the ground where we've got some under construction and others in design. Right now, the work that's in design is on, let me make sure I get this right, on Celso Puerta Street and on Castillo Street. And so the work in design on water main replacement right now was targeted for locations that they think would benefit most in advance of DSal coming online, because that's going to change the flow within some of the pipes, and we just want to make sure that that doesn't cause any issues within the system. So we're trying to get that work designed and built in advance of the DSal going online. So the cost of those water main replacements at those couple of locations is about $700,000. And going back to the program, the goal is a replacement of 1% a year, I think council's aware of that. Ideally, we can get to a point where we're doing a little bit more than 1% a year. That would assume pretty easy math, 100-year life for our pipes, which I think is not very realistic, given the average age right now that we have. So I think that is the end. If anybody has any questions, I can hear some music in the background already, so it sounds like Fiesta's getting going.
It gets earlier every year, right, Fiesta? Any speaker slips? No? Okay, Mr. Hart?
I just did have one question about the water main replacement. You raised the point about the DSal plant pushing water up into the city in a different way than the gravity feed pressure and the need to replace some of the water mains and to address that. Is that a bigger problem than just these handful of locations and would need even more investment? Or is it, are you pretty confident that that's all going to, that this will be all that's necessary to address that concern?
Rebecca Bjork is coming up, and she'll give you more detail on that.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, Rebecca Bjork, Public Works Director. In addition to the water main replacement, we were also doing a comprehensive program of flushing our pipes, and this year we're doing it with a methodology that uses a truck so that we're not having to dump that water. It's actually a much- It's actually a much better flushing program. One of the things, when we started that program, we did have some pipe breakages. I think that might have been part of the reason that they identified they needed to do some more work on rehabilitation. We are hopeful that the pipe replacement will be sufficient, but because it is an old system and a new operational scheme, we're doing what we think is the wise thing to do, but we will have to see what actually happens.
Well, that's a prudent, realistic answer. Is there deferent pressure involved with pumping the desalinated water up into the city as opposed to the gravity feed coming down?
The pressures, yeah, it will vary. I mean, there's pressure variations in the system day to night. And certainly, introducing water into different places in the system changes the pressure in the system. We already have that to some degree because our low zone has the wells contributing, and we don't have that online all the time. But we're going to be putting a lot more water in from D-SAL than we do from our wells. So the pressure system is particularly pushing it up in the system at night, which we do do to some extent already, but it will increase pressures. And importantly, just changing the directional flow can dislodge scale and things from the pipe walls. Hopefully, that won't cause structural issues, and again, that's why we're doing the flushing program.
When we did the plant previously, and it ran for just a very brief period of time, was there any experience from that?
I am not aware of any problems, and I haven't heard any reported. Of course, that was 30 years ago, so the pipes are 30 years older, and we've had a longer period of less good-quality water now to deposit materials into the pipes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Good question. Is the pressure going to be greater in the morning at somebody's house?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, generally, pressure is highest in our system at night because that's when the fewest people are using the system, and so there's more water in our reservoirs creating pressure. And my expectation is that the pressure regime will probably remain about the same, but I can't answer that specifically. The D-SAL does produce at a constant level, so assuming that people are using more during the day, again, I would expect that the pressures will be higher at night. And one thing I want to add on that, it's important to know that, because if your toilet tank is close to the spill valve, if it's not at least an inch below that spill valve at night, when the pressure goes up, the level on your tank can go up, and then you start flowing water to the sewer.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? There's always a lot going on around the city, so thank you very much. There's no motion needed for this, so that concludes this report. And we'll move right on to Councilmember Committee Assignment Reports. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Central Coast Water Authority meeting on July 28th. Two bits there that I think are interesting. One is, I think I might have mentioned this previously, but now it's official, that changes to the piping of the importation system that CCWA, as it's known, staff engineered and then built, has resulted in a little over 10% increase in flow, in the ability to push water from Buellton up into Kachuma Lake. So that's a nice additional piece. That's four acre feet, four to six acre feet a day more. That's a million to a million and a half gallons a day additional water, which they just through their inventiveness were able to bring in. Another piece that, again, of inventiveness, or we've seen this happen a little bit in the city as well, the CCWA refinanced some revenue bonds that were used for, I believe, for building the pipe system to begin with, and the city's savings alone was around $900,000. So they did a nice job of just taking advantage of the low interest rates and passing those savings back around.
Okay. Mr. Hotchkiss?
For those of you who are out there that are Deli fans, known as his family back online after two years, the East Side Deli on Delagara, known as, in fact, a great-great-grandmother who runs the place, and Councilman Dominguez and I were there yesterday for ribbon cutting and got a couple of delicious sandwiches out of the deal, too. So it's a great place to go.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last week, the city's County Affordable Housing Task Force met, and we heard presentations from the Housing Trust Fund and People Self-Help Housing on programs that will help people buy homes. So there's still some hope out there for people wanting to buy a home. And the Santa Barbara Youth Council, they're light activities during the summer because a lot of the students are traveling and studying abroad and stuff, but their plan is to bring former youth council members. They're old now, they're in their 20s, and they're going to come back and do leadership training with the current students. That's very exciting. So I'm giving a shout-out to Autry Liggett, who we can't, you know the name, right? And some of us just know the stellar students, and it's just wonderful to have them come back and mentor the younger teens. Thank you.
An alumni association. It's great. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Monday, the Wings of Honor had the artist and an unveiling of, well, mostly a sponsor appreciation. Did you go to that?
I could not make it yesterday.
It was represented by my wife, which was nice, because finally, you know, for all the other elected officials seemed to have representatives, I finally had one. Anyway, and they're getting closer to their final fundraising goal, so hopefully that will come to fruition at some point in time. It's going to be an amazing project.
Great. I also want to commend all involved with the Greek Festival over the weekend, and that was a lot of fun. I went over there on Saturday and talked with a number of members from our Patra Sister City group. Seems like there's a lot going on with various sister cities around the area, but that's always a fun event at Oak Park, so. Okay, and with that, we do have a closed session.
Item 13, conference with labor negotiator.
Okay, and we will adjourn from there. Viva la Fiesta, everyone. Have fun, and we will see you next week.